The first question that we have is talking about growth and economic development. And the question is, do you think Provo is about the right size? Or should it grow larger? And what should that growth look like? Gary?
Thank you. When I was born, Provo had a population of 133,000, I mean 33,000 people. Now we have about 115. We are not going to stop growth. It is not the right size because people want to be here. I have my kids that we love. Two of my kids live in Los Angeles. They want to come back. They want to live here. We are going to grow. And so for us to stop, I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think we should. What we should look like, we have a lot of planning to do. We've got some challenges on the west side that we want. That's where our growth can occur. We're going to grow up. We are not going to grow out. We don't have much time.
The county community needs to grow. I'm sorry. Provo City needs to continue to grow. What it looks like depends on how we manage it going forward. There's not a lot of room for expansion, so we need to use our land properly, use it to best ability. For growth, we need to bring businesses in also. So we're a vibrant city with the growth. We need to have health too. So I think as we grow, we're going to have to concentrate on bringing businesses into the city that will help us and they'll make us healthy and then allow areas for people to move and live and have homes. And that's what our city will continue to do.
It's unrealistic to expect that Provo's not going to grow at all. The point right now is we need some vision to make sure that we're growing in smart and sustainable ways. And that means being realistic about the land that we do have available. We are bounded on all sides, so unless we decide to annex one of the cities to our north and south, we are bounded by our boundaries. And we're going to have to be able to grow smart. And that means reviewing our zoning. That means taking a look and making sure that we have mixed use and we have alternate developments for people who want to come to Provo, stay in Provo, have affordable housing, have the kind of lifestyle that we want to keep, make sure that our neighborhoods stay intact, that we're building on the areas that make sense and not inside neighborhoods and putting in high-density housing where that wouldn't make sense. Making sure that that kind of housing is available and is for our citizens. I'm excited about the direction that Provo is going. I really think that we have some really great things in place. Provo is going. It makes no sense to make it clamp down.
Okay, moving down to David.
I think it's eloquently been stated that it's not a question of if we're going to grow, it's a question of how we're going to grow. We do have some land available to the west, particularly the southwest, and we need to make sure that we develop that as carefully as possible and make the most efficient and effective use of that space. We also need to be smart about how we redevelop, how we densify within the city. I appreciate the comments about business. We need to make sure as we grow that we're providing businesses for our residents nearby. And we also are currently the heart of Utah County. And so even when we stop or even if we don't grow population-wise, we're still going to have more visitors than people coming in for businesses. We need to make sure that we have a plan and we build smart so that we can accommodate all of those people and still maintain our quality of life.
Okay, Stephen?
First off, my name is Stephen Hemingway, but I'm running as hemi as a riotant because as you can see here on the poster, nobody can spell Stephen Hemingway correctly. So you would just write hemi, H-E-M-I, on your ballot. Now, I'm a real estate appraiser and a Realtor. When you talk about growth, it excites me because that means I can sell more real estate. Selling real estate in Provo is important because we can all grow. And one of the growth factors that we have here is real estate and the value of that. And gentrification is going to be one of the biggest issues that I see in my neighborhood. I bought on the west side of Provo because I love the west side of Provo. It reminds me where I grew up. I believe everybody is proud of where they live. I'm proud of where I live. And I think the growth around us is going to make it better as we evolve, as our houses, our housing stock increases and becomes better. Everyone will be better off.
My name is Dave Connect. I'm running for Southeast District Three, City Council. I believe we need to grow in a balanced fashion. You have to balance residential with business. If you don't have enough business to bring in the sales tax and provide jobs, you don't have the money to pay for the services that the residential neighborhoods need. A lot of people are buying everyday items in Orem, and we need to make sure that we have stores here in Provo that meet our needs. We also need to have a little more housing for young married students. Startup Crossing just opened, and they thought they were going to be filling it with young professionals. And they kind of are. They're young, just married, working, and student, somewhat professionals. But you know, they're, they're going to make that transition, and we have to have the right housing. Thank you.
Of all the Brian Smiths that you know, I'm the other one. Because everybody knows Brian Smith, Brian J. Smith, running for Council District Three. And I will be the first candidate from the west side to win in Provo, southwest side. Now, I've heard west said multiple times, southwest said a few times here just now. And I lived there, and I've lived there for almost 17 years and plan to continue to live there because that's where the growth is going to go. I'm very interested in managing that growth, very interested in providing jobs, business, retail for all of you so when you graduate, you can stay in Provo. We want that. And if we don't want to grow in Provo, we're doing the wrong things because we're doing the right things right now for growth. And we, I just want to make sure that that happens smartly and continues.
Great. Let's move on to the second question, which talks again about growth and what's happening. And it's kind of a multi-part question. So the question is, what are your thoughts on retail? How ought Provo balance the big box stores with local business? And should the big box stores be allowed to expand onto the west side? So again, your thoughts on retail, the difference between big box and local, and should the big box stores be able to expand to the west side? And Kay, we'll start with you on this one and rotate down.
Retail is critical. Our financing for the city, a large part of it comes from sales tax, so it is critical. We cannot put all of our chips in one side of retail though because when we have economic downturns like we had in 2006, 2008, it really cuts your income dramatically and you really have to adjust. So Provo has taken a balanced approach to balance the retail with the property tax and not concentrate totally on just bringing retail and incentivize bringing retail people in. And it's worked well for us, and we're going to continue, hopefully to continue, I'd like to continue that balance. The big box stores will come where they want to come. Cities can encourage, cities can reach out, and cities can provide information for these big box stores, but they totally look at population and rooftops. And when they do the analysis and find that it'll handle a new big box store, then they'll move. So we just have to be very inviting for them.
Great.
As we're planning to future in Provo, if you look at the way that the retail space is heading, right now about 5% of all of retail is online and e-commerce. And while a lot of people in this room may buy a lot online, not a lot of people do overall. And so what we're looking for in Provo is making sure that when we bring in big box stores, putting them in places that make sense. And that when we're looking at attracting other retail, we're looking at local and individualized stores and storefronts that you can't find online. As more and more general things move online, we want to make sure that we have the kind of retail in Provo that can't be replicated online. So that we keep dollars in Provo so that we can build our community without raising our taxes on property and on the other, and on other areas of our economy. So I want to make sure that if we have big box, I'm not opposed to it. I'm sure it will come to the west side, but we're putting in an location that makes sense, that it's going to go in a place that is not going to disrupt the neighborhoods, that we have the kind of economic development that will keep the city going. And I think that the city can do a lot to make sure that that keeps happening.
I think retail is important. It is just one part of commercial and the jobs overall, but it is a very important thing because of sales tax as well as, we often focus on sales tax, but we often don't focus on how that affects our quality of life to have local retail that is in close proximity to where we live. So I actually think that we should focus first and foremost on bringing the kinds of retail that we want and that we use every day rather than necessarily focusing on things that will bring other people into our city. I think once we are supplying our own needs, others are going to want to be here anyway. Box versus local, it all depends on place. There are certain places that it would be great to have some big box, high sales tax stores. There's places that we need to protect to allow our local businesses to grow. Box on the west side in general, yes. I think the west side will need lots, but including boxes.
When I first moved to Provo, I moved out to Fortina West and Center Street. There was a little store on the corner of Center and about Geneva Road. It was a cute little store. And they deleted that store, and they were going to put a Smiths in there. It's been vacant ever since, been vacant for about 13 or 14 years. I had the opportunity about a week and a half ago to discuss with a few developers at Real Con as well as the representative at Kroger's. So not only am I thinking about it, I'm working on it even as we speak to try and get development here in Provo and try and work situations with Kroger's and with the developers to actually put something there so west side can actually have a store to shop at. Now, big boxes, we have so much space, we just have to try to figure out where they're going to go. But that's what I'm trying to work on at this point.
Recently, Provo did a survey and study of how we're losing sales tax and where people are shopping and what they're buying outside of Provo. And the number one loss or leakage was groceries followed by pharmaceuticals. We need a grocery store on the west side. We have for some time. This missed property is problematic. They don't want to build and yet they won't sell it to someone else. And it's the best place to put something. I would prefer that we have local businesses and support local businesses rather than have a big box. Big box may be inevitable, but it's not my preference. I wouldn't want to see us spend a lot of money like some communities do to subsidize and bring in a big box at the expense of local business.
Many of you might have seen the same post that I saw on the internet recently that said when you shop at a big box, at a big box store, you're buying a CEO, a new Bentley or something like that. Maybe it forgot you. When you buy from a local retail store, you're putting some parents' kids to college. You're buying shoes for those people. Do I dislike big box? No, they serve a purpose. And if they're going to come, they'll come. They do their homework. They'll come where they're wanted and where there's longevity. And frankly, as has already been stated, cities derive a lot of tax from big box stores. That said, I'm very interested in changing zoning so that retail, small retail, small shops, mom and pop groceries can pop up in almost every neighborhood that exists in Provo. That's my goal.
We get 25% of our income from retail sales tax. I am grateful for all of the retailers. We have some important local business people, but we need to cater to those, anyone that will come and help support our community. We don't want to sell a house, give away everything. We invited Target. They wanted $20 million to come. It wasn't worth it to us. We could not afford to do that. Yes, they might have brought other businesses around it. I believe in the big box, but I also believe in the local, local groups that will support our community. I look at the retail, at the Little Maverick that was on Center Street. They, between them and Carports America, they almost do as much sales tax for the city of Provo as Kmart or ShopCo did for us. We are working with, within, working on retail areas that will provide more sales tax. Our sales tax is actually going up. We have increased in sale tax every year over the last four years, and we're looking to make more on sales tax.
Thank you for your watching. Very civil on the comments. I like what we see on the national stage. I do have one quick question. Are any of you Provo High graduates? Okay, because this question is, do you see advantages to moving Provo High School to the west side or should it remain downtown? And Coria, we'll start with you on this one.
It's okay, answer this. I'm a T-bird from Tibview. Is that all right?
Not qualified.
Not qualified answer. I have taken a look at, at the proposed program to move Provo High to the west side, and I'm excited about it. It makes sense to move it over there for several different reasons. When we bonded for new schools in the past couple of years, we wanted to make sure that when we rebuilt Provo High, that it was built in the right way so it would last a long time. And when they surveyed that land, they found that it is smaller than they had anticipated and that building up will compromise the campus. And so to build something, a high school that will last for a very long time, moving it west side makes a lot of sense. That's where the population center is moving for younger families. It is going to be great for the location to be able to make sure that we have the schools there. And then the flip side of that is being able to have that parcel of land in the center of Provo that we could do really great things with, whether it's new retail or developments or other opportunities. There are buyers already looking for it that will mitigate the cost of a new high school going in on the west side. I'm excited about it. It makes a lot of sense, and the plans look really great.
That's a huge question. Can you try to answer in 60 seconds? Are there benefits to moving? Yes. I think that many in the community are not fully appreciating the costs or the losses that we will experience if it is moved. When all the details are known, we'll be able to make a much better decision on that. But I don't think it's cut and dry. I think there are some significant disadvantages to moving it. Mistakes were made with the bonding, and I think it's unfortunate that that may preclude a good choice coming out of this because of, because of the funding. Also, when we talk about retail and things, it will depend on who the buyer is. There may be no new sales tax derived from the sale. There are advantages to having a high school in an urban core, and I think when we find all the, all the details, we'll be able to make a good decision.
Well, I'm a cop, so I don't have any real say between the fight of that. But in Salt Lake, I grew up in a neighborhood where I was in between Lincoln Junior High and South High School, and they both closed those schools. And you'll see that there's what is called Lincoln Plaza at the north, and the community college bought the old South High. So the closure of a school, it brings great opportunities. When I saw that we could build a piece of land that was actually donated, I thought, wow, that is a great idea. Let's, let's put that new high school at the donated site and let's make something that we can make a tax on at the site, which is what Provo High School is right now. I thought it was pretty simple personally, but I don't have those, those ties to community like maybe the Bulldogs do. So I hope I don't offend anyone in that regard. But I've seen that it is wise to say.
All my kids graduated from Tibview, but I, for some time, as an employee of the church, I do repairs at the Provo Seminary, so I interact with the kids, the principals, the teachers there. Provo High is a great place. And the first thing we need to make sure is whatever we do, that the students are well-served. So that if they do move to the west side on that property that they have, that it's really in the best interest of the students first and foremost. They are offering money, someone is offering money, and I know that the money is really hard to come by. And the school district would love to have enough money to rebuild another school in addition to what they've already planned. The bond was supposed to be bigger and they lowered it just so they could have a better chance of getting it passed. So I think that things are leaning towards using that property on the west side.
I have the utmost respect for the Provo School District Board, Mrs. Rash and those others that sit on that board, and trust that they are doing due diligence in determining the best outcome with pros and cons lists and things like that. With that said, a free plot and money to come in and make money and pay down that over $100 million bond, it almost seems like a no-brainer. That's got to weigh heavy on that pros and cons list. Something that comes in, I agree, it's 50/50 whether it makes tax or not. It's got to be smart, whatever it is that goes in there. It's got to fit, and it's got to be good for Provo. Well, do I see it moving? Frankly, yes, I see it moving. I think it, I think Provo High and the school district will make the best decision, and whatever outcome, they'll make the best of it, and so will the students that go there.
As a city council person, we've had the opportunity to meet with the Provo School District. And they've informed us on a few of their plans. They gave us as a city the first try to refusal. We don't have that kind of money in our budget right now to do that. It would take some very creative financing, and then I don't know if that's the city's place to go purchasing a school. The school board will have to make some definite decisions. They will have to be very diligent with the people that voted for the bond to support the new schools. If they sell Provo High, we will have less busing than we actually have right now to build it on the west side, which will be helpful for the students to be closer. It's always nice to be closer to your school. And also, if they sell Provo High, there are many opportunities that could be available. We'll just have to see who the buyer is at the appropriate time. And the school board is doing their due diligence. I have very much a great deal of respect for them and the work that they're putting into this.
Again, the school district will make this decision. I'm grateful. I don't have to make this decision. It's a hard decision. I think there's some very real tradition in having a high school downtown as the center of the town and it's named Provo High. I think that's critical to give that up. I think if they move their high school to the west side of town, I think it will not help the east-west divide that we have in our communities in high school level and in the poor high school. I, I think you cannot deny that there's a financial gain by using that property. Some of the disadvantages, I think, for the school to give up property, do we know that we will not need a third high school at some point in time? If our, if our growth continues like it does and it's all going to be on the west side and we give up a location that will be central Provo, well, we need that spot for a high school eventually anyway. And so I'm not convinced yet that, that we want to give up property. That is a school board's decision, and I, I have confidence that they'll, I think the bond plays a big part of this because that bond was passed knowing we're going to improve Provo High and that spot.
Okay, our fourth question is, we have a hard time trying to pin down our national politicians with a simple answer that we can understand. So we're going to make this a simple one. If the first is a yes or no. And so this question is, do you want the RAP tax to be passed? If yes, what would you use the funds for? And if no, why? So this is, we really want to know where your stand is. And David, we start with you. Yes or no and why?
I've been told that we will actually need three new buses for...
Yes or no, David, on the RAP tax?
I just wanted to correct it. It will increase buses.
Yes or no on the RAP tax?
Okay, yes or no. I think it's great that the student, or that the citizenry get to vote on it. My personal opinion, I'll probably be voting yes on it, but I think what's important is that the citizens get to vote on that. My biggest belief is we need to be sustainable in our budget, that if we want the services, we need to fully pay for them and not just pay for part of them and leave the maintenance and infrastructure improvements for down the line. If we want the service, we need to pay for it, and you know, that means we want higher taxes to get those services. That's great. If we don't want to pay those higher taxes, let's not get those services.
Thank you.
The RAP tax, in my opinion, is good because it's on a sales basis. You can not pay the RAP tax if you don't want to buy stuff in Provo. Okay. And that may sound odd, but personally, I usually shop in Orem because Provo doesn't have a store that has food that I normally buy. See, because I'm what is called an ovolactopescetarian. Can you all repeat that? Ovolactopescetarian, which means that my wife is into yoga. And so we eat things that other people might not eat. And so, yes, in terms of the tax, I, I think it's good because it will go to recreation, arts, and parks, which right now, those funds are coming in with a general fund. From what I understand, that we're already paying for what we will be getting, only now we will get it with sales tax.
Okay?
This is a hot topic. The city is faced with lots of increases on utilities and various taxes, and there's a lot of people on fixed incomes. And I, I don't know how the vote will go. I currently have enough money that I don't feel like $40, $50 a year is going to impact me a lot, but I, I do believe it will make a big difference to the parks and the arts. We have a lot of parks in this town that have never, ever been finished or just maintained properly. And, and they've been promised for years and years and years, and there's just never enough money. My actual preference is not a tax increase, but to bring more business to Provo, stop losing dollars to Orem so that we can keep the money in Provo and have the money to do our parks and arts without raising taxes.
Yes. No, that's not all. Keep telling me. For the last three years, I've been on the planning commission. For five years before that, I was in Parks and Rec Board, serving as an appointment on the committee, and I've seen the dirty underbelly of parks and what, what we lack in bringing them to Provo and keeping them up. When my friend over here shops in Orem, he's paying a RAP tax. So let Orem come to Provo and pay our RAP tax. We have 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars a year going into our parks just for upkeep. We're not talking about building new parks necessarily, but we're just talking about keeping things up. New bathrooms, changing out the stalls and things like that after they get greased and whatnot. It's a necessary thing. Then we don't have to rely so much on, on taxes on new construction or on government loans and things like that, which we have to at this point. So, yes.
I painfully support the RAP tax. It hurts to raise taxes at any time, but I think this is an important one. We have 50% of our property here in Provo that is not taxable. We have people in our community that use the parks that are not paying property taxes. We have to support and we have to maintain our parks. I believe that we should put the RAP tax money into the maintenance of our parks. Some people say we should go to reduce subsidies. We're not reducing subsidies by paying the money to the, on the RAP tax. The subsidies will still be there. All it will do in my mind is not use transparent to the residents. I believe that we need to take this RAP tax and pay for things that are not funded. We have to maintain what we've got. That was the first thing that the residents asked for when we did our Parks and Rec Master Plan. Maintain what you've got. We have some facilities that are not funded, which the RAP tax will give to, and a one-tenth of 1%, I don't think we're asking too much.
I'm only going in against the RAP tax. I wrote the statement that will be in your election materials against the RAP tax for two, two specific reasons. Number one, Provo residents have suffered a increase in taxes and fees over the last few years. We've added Utility Transportation Fund that's on utility bill. We have property tax increase. We have 17% increase in the utility bill that's happening right now. Fee increases have gone, the state added a 5% per gallon gas tax increase just recently. The county commissioner on the same bout, you'll have the RAP taxes proposing a quarter percent sales tax in that to add to your tax also. I just don't think we need to hit our citizens with any more taxes. Another reason is because I don't think there's a compelling need to really justify raising the tax. I think there really needs to be a compelling need. As surveys are taken, 91% of the Provo residents rated Provo parks, recreation facilities As surveys are taken, 91% of the Provo residents rated Provo parks, recreation facilities, and trails as good or excellent. And the surveys just show that people are very pleased with the parks. National survey has said our parks are good, so I just don't think there's a compelling need.
I'll personally be voting for the RAP tax, but the great thing is that the citizens get to decide whether or not they want it. So if you don't want it, get out and vote and tell everybody that you don't want it. If you do want it and you do find it valuable, then get out and tell people the same thing. Again, we are already paying the RAP tax at equivalent when we go to Orem. They already have this tax. So in my case, I am excited that this kind of funds could go towards repairing the playgrounds that my children play on, making sure that the Provo River Trail is being upkept and is a safe and secure place to be able to exercise and have fun, making sure that our Rock Canyon, Slay Canyon, all those other places that the city has to take care of and make sure that they are maintained at the quality that we all want to use them at, that's what the RAP tax would be for. So for me, it's a quality of life issue for me and for my family. I want to make sure that we are maintaining our recreation and our parks because it's part of what makes living in Provo so great.
Great, thank you. Stephen, we're going to start this question out with you and it affects many of the people here and the relationship of the college student population here in Provo for not only BYU, but UBU. And what have you done or will you do to attend to the concerns of the college students? You can address retail development in South Campus, housing protection, or transportation issues. What do you see the relationship with the city of Provo with our college student population?
Well, actually, I think the college students are a boon to Provo. Let's face it, BYU is one of the biggest economic bases that we have. And basically in District 5, which is what I'm running for, we don't have a lot of college students live there. Most of the college students live in the other districts. But I have not really had too big of a problem with the college students other than that they're here and we enjoy them. And maybe I'll hear from everybody else what they have a problem with college students. I know as a college student myself, I didn't really get too involved with the communities.
I don't think the question is what's the problem with the students. I think the question is where you have it.
There's no problem with the students at all. Everything's great. Don't you think? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For 13 of the last 21 years, I've been a chair in the neighborhood program in Provo. There's 34 neighborhoods and the university is its own neighborhood with the president as the acting chair, Steve Sandberg as his representative. I've always advocated that the university neighborhood should have a vice chair, perhaps a student body president, someone to represent the student issues. Student issues come up occasionally and when they do, it's a big deal. Parking, boating and towing. Years ago, we had an issue with a dance club. Housing is important. When I was on the council 10 years ago, I served one term and when I decided to stay home with my family, who asked me to. But we worked on improving housing for the students. Thank you.
The students at BYU and maybe contrary to popular belief, at UBU make up Provo. They make Provo what it is. They make Provo as cool as it is, as hip as it is, as young as it is, with an average age of like 17. No, it's not that young, but it's a great thing. The relationship absolutely needs to continue. It needs to continue to build and it needs to continue to grow and be better. We need more involvement from the BYU students, BYU people, more involvement in city organization. And Dave is absolutely right. Steve Sandberg is doing a great job and always has as a representative of you here with the city. And I think that we're going nowhere but upward in our relationship and we have to continue that.
BYU is critical to Provo. We would not be Provo without BYU. And I'm grateful for the students. We need to work on helping with the transportation that goes back and forth. We have many UBU students living in Provo that want to be part of the BYU scene. So we need to develop transportation opportunities that will help the students. BYU is cutting back on the roads. They're asking students not to bring their cars to school if possible. And so we need to make sure that we're providing the right transportation. We need to give opportunities. We look at the things that we've done in downtown Provo. The students are making things vibrant down there. I look at the music scene, the rooftop concert series that we're so grateful for the BYU students to come forward. In the last couple of years, we have created the BYU neighborhood. For a long time, they were neglected. And now Steve Sandberg is very active in our neighborhood program and a great voice for BYU on our neighborhood program with the city.
As I mentioned, BYU and UBU and Provo City have a great partnership and they're dependent on each other, they add to each other. We've had a lot of association with them. A lot of our items and land use items have to do with BYU. Transportation items that we deal with on the council have to do with BYU. And so those are all critical parts and I hope that will continue. I would hope for a stronger representation from the students from each school to our council meetings and other meetings where they can express their opinions. And I know it's hard for students that are here for a short amount of time to get that involved and to really get rooted, but many of them are staying now and so we're seeing that. I commend the mayor for his reaching out with his social media ways and he has added some vibrancy to downtown, rooftop concerts and the other exciting things that go on down in downtown Provo that reaches out to that age group. And I hope that this can continue and be a vital part of Provo City's profile.
I went to BYU. My parents taught at BYU. My grandparents taught at BYU. I love this school. And I have so many good friends that are at UBU as well. And you guys are an economic engine for the city. You keep us not only young, but you keep us abreast of important developments, of political thought, of really fantastic thought and culture that gets brought to our community because of BYU. I think you guys can get involved by making sure that the city is staying abreast of landlords that are not meeting their obligations, that we are making sure that your other needs are being taken care of. I support the BRT. I'm excited for the new transportation options that are coming to the city so that we can get around the town easier. I love the fact that we have BYU and UBU in the community. Our schools benefit from you guys volunteering. We have so many BYU students that come and volunteer in our schools, helping with our emergent programs. You guys are fantastic, not only culture, but economic and great drivers for our community. So thank you.
So District 5 is our central district. It contains parts of Joaquin, Mazer, North Park, Dixon, as well as the central business district. There's a lot of students, both BYU and UBU students in District 5. To answer the question about how can I be aware of the concerns of the students, I think the number one thing is accessibility, to be available by email, by Twitter, on Facebook, as well as communicating out through newsletters and updates on what is going on in the council. So that really is the answer to the question. I do agree that it would be great to have more general involvement of BYU students in the greater community and volunteers. We talked about transportation and...
Thank you. We're keeping a little bit on the line. I heard BRT came up a little bit. And so the next question, and we start off with Dave down there in District 3. What is your priorities for public transit in the Provo market?
Well, a lot of that's in motion as we speak. We have BRT coming. We have FrontRunner that has arrived. And I'm really happy to see BYU working together with the private business, The Ride, providing a shuttle that has been much needed. I hope it's working for the students. I hope that BYU makes adjustments as necessary, but that is a huge boon so that we can get a community where you can get places, whether it be on foot or on a bicycle. We just passed our Provo City Bicycle Master Plan to try to make the city more bicycle-friendly. Things that we can do to get around without needing a car, that is a great goal.
Priorities for public transit in Provo. UTA already here. It can be improved. Ridership needs to improve. The stops need to improve. We need to hold UTA accountable for what they do in our city and what we grant them as far as property and things like that. FrontRunner is a great use. Every time I drive from my work at New Skin to my home in southwest Provo, I drive by that lot and it's full. That lot was built as large as it is to hold retail paths there eventually, potentially. I don't see the room for it. I think that's a good thing. It's a good problem because everybody's using FrontRunner. BRT, I'm for it. Needs to happen. Whether it will be used 100% right now or not, it won't. But we are burying our heads in this app if we don't prepare for 20 years from now, 25 years from now. Uber, it's here. It's cool. I'm going to try it one time. We'll see what happens. Public transit, yeah.
I look for opportunities. We always got to have our eyes open and to take advantage of opportunities. BRT is not the perfect answer and it's not going to be a perfect answer, but I think it's part of the answer. I look at what we're doing as far as biking in Provo. We are making great strides as far as transportation. We need secondary transportation that's available to our people. The bike paths are getting more and more use. We're developing our streets where bikes can be used more effectively. I'm looking at our sidewalks. We had a presentation yesterday to our council how important walking is going to be. That is still transportation. We need to make sure that we have a walkable community, a safe walkable community where people can get where they want to be and get the things that they want. So transportation is critical. BRT is part of that. It's going to come. We just need to do the best we can.
Public transportation is a necessity in communities to reach certain populations. Will Provo reach that population point at this time? I'm not sure. Public transportation is very heavily subsidized. FrontRunner's been a great success according to UTA, although every time a person buys a ticket, that ticket's subsidized by about $7.30 by public funds. My concern is, is the public transportation, meaning subsidized public transportation, the answer? I don't think so. I think the shuttle, a private shuttle, has come to BYU now and showing us that it can be done on the private market. I think we need to pay some more attention to that instead of just jumping to the public transportation side all the time. And as we continue to expand our roads and redo our roads as we open the opportunity for bicycles and walking, I think that's a great thing.
I've looked a lot of different places, back east and in Europe, and other places where an integrated public transportation system is incredible, where it really moves people back and forth and keeps commerce flowing. And I see that as a vision for Provo. We're just starting. We have a limited bus service right now with UTA. Stocks are being eliminated. We want to make sure that we are building a public transportation system right now to make sure that our population in 10, 20, 30 years is going to be sustained. We do not want 24,000 more cars on our roads. Nobody wants that. We need to make sure that we're building now and planning now for public transportation to make sure that our commerce keeps going, to make sure that Provo stays a hub. If you look at the way that the Wasatch Front is being built up, we need a public transportation system that integrates Provo with the rest of the Wasatch Front. That gets you easily from here to Lehigh, to downtown, to the airport. That makes it easy for commerce to flow, for people to move back and forth, and it keeps our quality of life and to make sure that our air quality is being handled as well. So the BRT is a start. It's not perfect, but it's a start.
The question was specifically about public transit, but as the answers so far have indicated that public transit is just one aspect of a complete transportation system and complete streets, including pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities and the like, need to be a part of this conversation. Specifically about public transportation, we're talking about BRT. We're trying to get the details as good as we can, you know, the fine details as it comes in. But what we really should be looking at is the next phase of BRT. On the transportation plans, the next line is scheduled to come in in 10 to 15 years. And while we've been working on the first BRT for 10 to 15 years, so we really need to be looking ahead. You know, when we talk about BRT, of course, the plan right now is for tracks made down to Orem but not to Provo, which to me is kind of ridiculous. We need to be making sure that we exert our influence, make sure we get a good system. And then a rail line out to the airport, I think, is another setup.
Okay, I'm going to ask a hard question to everybody in the audience. How many of you use rapid or public transportation? How many of you? We got one, two. There we go. Okay, we're getting them. What would you say? Maybe that's 20% maybe. I think as a council person, we need to be examples. And I think there's a couple that ride and bike all the time and utilize rapid transit or mass transit. I try to use it whenever I can. One of the questions I have when I ask people, "Move to Provo," and I do it all the time because I want to sell them a house, you know, it's kind of self-serving in a way. But they say, "Oh, I like living in Eagle Mountain," or "I like living in Salt Lake," or "Draper is good." I say, "No, I bought a mile away from where I work. I get to walk to work. I can ride my bike, I can walk. It's just marvelous. I love it." And I think that's the example as the...
Okay, we're ready to move on. And this one, Brian, we'll start with you. And the question is, what should the city's role be in promoting affordable housing? What should the city of Provo's role be in providing affordable housing?
Provo does a good job of working on affordable housing for its citizens right now. It's put a lot of time, effort, a lot of volunteer hours spent on committees that work specifically for this. A lot of this housing exists in the south Provo, in the southwest of Provo, but it needs to be spread all around Provo. I think that Provo's role in this is a big one. It needs to be bigger. As we have families come in that are of socioeconomic status that make them have a need for assistance, we ought to allow for that so we keep good people in Provo that can work in all facets of Provo's, of Provo City.
Affordable housing is critical to a community. You need to have a diverse mix. One of the challenges that we face, however, in Provo is the fact that we have 50% of the affordable housing in our city that's of the whole county. And those, affordable housing brings different challenges. And so we need to make sure that we're having the proper mix. Provo City in the past has been very supportive of subsidized housing and affordable housing, but we are at a point where we have to watch what we're doing. We have to be careful so that we're getting a good mix, a good market mix. We need some of those housing as well. When you say affordable, yes, we want people to be able to live here, but there are challenges that come along with that. And I think it's important for the city not to become too involved, much more than we already are, because we're already providing a great number of affordable housing opportunities.
As we define affordable housing, you just mean homes that are affordable for the general population? Do we talk about subsidized housing? What are we talking about? Is the city helping people get into homes or is it just having homes that cost a level that's affordable to the general population? I think we need to look at that. If we're talking about subsidized housing, we need to be careful, as Mr. Anderson's talked about. Provo has a large amount of subsidized housing in our community for the whole county. And as new developments come in and have some subsidized housing, the neighbors generally don't want that. And as they come and represent themselves in our council meetings and say, you know, "We don't want that development because we would like to have more single-family homes." And so we have this balance of, okay, how do we make the city continue to grow? How do we spread housing out so it's diversified over the whole city? And still protect...
How do we spread housing out so it's diversified over the whole city and still protect neighborhoods? It is a hard balance. And Provo has five or six programs that help people get into homes. It's just not subsidized housing. Thank you.
I think Kay is referring to, one of the things he's referring to is the partnership with the Neighborhood Program that Provo has and helping it easier for people to get into homes and to stay into homes and making sure those homes are being kept up. And that's a public-private partnership, non-private partnership, that's working, I think, really well, and I'd like to see that keep going. The reality is that we can't sustain building more half-acre lots with massive single-family homes. We are gonna run out of land if we keep doing that. So we need to make sure that we're looking at zoning for mixed-use land, for smaller footprint housing, making more sense and building more sustainably. And making it easier for young families to move into houses and to take that first step. And then building high-density housing where it makes sense and spreading out or becoming more affordable housing across as the footprint of the city versus localizing it, which brings its own issues.
I think the other candidates have described this very well. What exactly does affordable housing mean? Are we talking about subsidized housing or are we just talking about making sure that there are homes available for different people in different stages of life? I do believe that the city does have a role, in part, in regulation, but also in encouraging other cities in the county to step up and do their part in participating in subsidized housing, as well as encouraging a healthy mix of subsidized, of affordable but not subsidized housing throughout Provo City and the county.
I think one of the most exciting parts of being on the council is going to be a part of the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency has such a power to be able to help with creating and fixing problems in the neighborhoods. Houses, I lived in a house that was redeveloped by what was called Neighborhood Housing Services and the redevelopment agency. The reason I moved it, moved there as an appraiser and a realtor, one, the quality of work that they did on the house was perfect. Two, my wife loved the kitchen. She loved the kitchen. They did a very good job on it. And I'm thinking, why can't we, as a redevelopment agency, as a city council, move that program forward and try and do it to more houses and build the housing stock? Help the housing stock improve in quality. Thank you.
For the last nine years, I've been a volunteer on the board of Neighborhoods. In that time, we have built 35 new homes in the Pioneer Neighborhoods and bought and rehabbed 50. We've also done a lot of Paint Your Heart Out projects and about 400 of those with thousands of volunteer hours, many of which were students that came to help. A couple of years ago, I was elected board president and I look forward to Neighborhoods continuing its mission of helping low and moderate income families by creating affordable housing options. A lot of the funding used to come from the federal government through CBG, Community Relevant Block Grants, but for the last five years, the city has not been working with Neighborhoods on that level. But we do have banks and other investors that have stepped up the bat.
Thank you. Now we'll talk a little bit about a working relationship within the city. And Gary, we're gonna start with you, back to you. What's your philosophy about the proper relationship between the municipal council and the city administration?
I believe that they have to work hand in hand. I don't understand, some people say that you, as a city council, you're supposed to keep the mayor and the administration in check. I think that we should not necessarily fight each other. We need to work together. As I began my opportunity on the city council, I supported Mayor Curtis in his campaign to become mayor. After he was elected, he came to me and said, "Gary, would you consider working on the city council?" And I said, "For you, Mayor, I'd be glad to." I am grateful for the opportunity. We have to work together. I don't understand why some people say that if the administration or the council has a good idea, why we should fight each other. It's critical that we work together. That's part of the problem with the federal government right now. We have one party and another party, and they are not willing to work together to accomplish the things that we can do in our communities. We are a local, we're neighbors. We should talk, we should work it out, and we should go together.
I think the relationship between the administration and the city as a constitutional relationship is defined, and we do need to work together. The city runs smoother when we work together. We've had times in our city where it hasn't worked so well together. And things weren't accomplished. Provo's accomplished a lot the last so many years when the relationship's been good. But I also think there's a responsibility of checks and balances. And there's been issues that have come up in the council in the last few years where the administration's brought forth some programs and the council said, "No, we don't want to do that. But let's work together and figure out how we can make that a little bit better." And we've been able to find success in doing that so that the community got a little bit better program and both areas contributed and worked together to accomplish that. So I think that's the ideal.
The administration works in an executive capacity and the city council basically works as a legislative and a rule-setting committee. And when they work together, great things can happen. I come from the digital and technology space, so one of our guiding principles is best idea wins. It doesn't matter who said it, where it comes from. If it comes from the council, the mayor's office, it comes directly from the people. That is what we need to be working for. What's the best idea? What will take us forward? What will move and prepare our city for the future? And to me, I think that if the mayor has a great idea, fantastic. If it comes from the city council and there needs to be a little bit of irony back and forth before an idea goes forward, I think that that works even better. So I'm excited to be able to work with the mayors and keep great things happening in Provo.
I think it's part of the role of the council to ask questions. I believe that debate and asking hard questions and going through that synthesis process can result in better programs and a better-run city. There's no question that we need to work together. There's no question that when relationships are good, that good things happen, and we need that to move forward. But we do need, the city council needs to feel empowered to ask those questions. I think a recent example of that is with the RAP tax. I don't think we ever really answered the question of what we're gonna do, what we would like to see done with RAP money. But the administration came forward with a proposal where we were gonna bond against future revenue and we were gonna do this, this, this. And the council reached out to the public, the public spoke back, and the council took the thought about it and came back and said, "We think it would be a little better if we did this." The administration came up with a second proposal that is much better.
The concern that I hear, now the answers, is that no matter what the council or mayor does, ultimately, it's the citizens who we need to serve. And I think we need to actually put more emphasis on, like the slogan for my campaign is "Progress Through Participation." I think that the people need to be able to let us know as elected representatives what we wanna do and we need to do it. That's really what I'm boiled down to. Now, whether we're legislative branch or executive branch, it doesn't matter, what we need to do is make sure that the citizens are taken care of and they get what is the best product for them. And so that's where I think, thank you.
I like your answer, Hemi.
Thank you.
We are here to serve the public, and that includes the student population, which is a huge part of Provo. Recently, the city council instituted, working with a BYU graduate professor, the Provo People's Lobby, an online way to bring legislation to the council that wouldn't necessarily come forward any other way, and that's a great opportunity to reach out. We have a neighborhood chair program. We have meetings all the time, critical issues with neighbors, reaching out and finding where the good ideas are and supporting those good ideas, whether they come from the administration, the council staff, developers occasionally, and certainly students in the neighborhoods.
I'm lucky enough to sit on a board, a volunteer board, of UTI U-Soccer, 55,000 constituents. And we have a staff that works with us. And while we have a fiduciary duty to every person in the state that plays soccer, we're very concerned for each individual person. On the city level, it's the same. While as an elected council member, we have a constituency that we are responsible to listen to and represent, we make decisions for the whole of Provo, for the better of Provo. And if we can't stand on soapboxes against staff, we have to work and be good at gaining consensus with staff and the rest of the council in moving forward for the best for Provo. And having a head-to-head relationship with staff is not good. We've gotta work together. And there's easy ways to do that.
We're down to our final question, and I think we've covered a lot of it already. So I'm gonna throw in a different question, and we start with you on Kay. And one of the issues is, we see in Utah Valley a lack of participation in the political process. What do you feel could be done to improve the participation of the public in the city of Provo politics? Kay, we'll start with you.
As we look at participation, I think we need maybe find what we're talking about. Are we talking about the voting process in election time? Are we talking about participation in the neighborhood meetings and people coming to those meetings? Are we talking about municipal council meetings and participation there? So there's lots of ways to participate. And I think that participation in our government is a right for people. I don't think we need to manipulate things to get people to participate. I think people need to want to participate. I think we live in a community, though, where people are very busy. And they elect a representative and they say, "I elected the person I want. I trust him. That's why I elected him, and he can go do that business and I'll continue to do my business." I think that happens sometimes. So I think the participation needs to be more in the communication between the representative and the individual people and not just increase your voter turnout.
Now, this is a problem, right? You guys, I don't know how many of you are actually registered to vote. You are probably not a great sample of population since you're already here and we know that you're interested, but we want more people to be able to participate in the process. And already, Orem and some of the other counties and cities in the state have instituted vote by mail. I would love to see that come to Provo if it makes financial sense. That would hugely increase our participation in voting. I wanna make sure that we, as lawmakers, as would-be lawmakers, are communicating better. That means through social media, through email, through regular newsletters. Make sure that you're aware and that our neighbors are aware of what's happening in the city and what's important to you. And the alternative, and the back and forth of that, of course, is that we need to hear from you. What are you interested in? The catch-22 is, when things are great and things are fantastic, people are not participating in the election process. And when they aren't great, that's when people tend to come out. Well, we need to make sure that we're preparing for the fact that if you want things to keep going and you wanna make sure that your community is a great place to live, that you're participating.
I agree. Participation has a lot of different wrinkles to it. If we just want to improve voter turnout, I think vote by mail would be by far the most effective way to do that. There's a question about, you know, are we improving the informed voter turnout if we go to something like that? Another surefire way to get people more involved across the board would be poor governance, but I am not gonna advocate for that. And then finally, I do think a healthy way to do that is through more communication, better communication. We have so many tools at our disposal now that we've never had before. There's really less and less excuse for people not to be informed. And I think our public servants can use those tools to keep people up to date, keep them informed, and then let them decide if they want to come out to the meetings and vote.
I have to tell you, the nonchalant attitude towards voting is rampant. Democracy is dying. We need to stop it. The situation, I'm a good example. The reason I am here today is because there's only one candidate that was going to be on the ballot. Now, if you see the article written, there's one public plug-in for Daniel Woodruff, about the seven cities in Utah that are canceling elections. Now imagine, now I think it's just unheard of, and that's the reason I'm here today. People have to take it to heart that voting is supreme. It makes a difference. And it doesn't just, "Oh, well, I might go vote," or "I don't care." I'll tell you, I'm riding my bike. I stopped by three people by Smith's. I say, "Hey, I'm Hemi. I'm running for city council." I say, "Well, it doesn't matter. We can't vote." Why? We're ex-cons. I said to them, "You know what? That's okay, 'cause 70% of the people that can't vote, don't." Now that's a sad thing.
When you see BYU Stadium fill up with a lot of excited fans, imagine they were all coming to vote. Well, they kind of are. They're voting for their team. It's school spirit. And what we need in Provo is a little more spirit, some community involvement and pride. I've seen that through, the council has a matching grant program for the neighborhoods. $5,000, they'll match your labor, and the community comes together, works on a park, a playground, do landscaping to beautify the neighborhood. And those people that come have more involvement and pride and participation, and I think they're more likely to vote. I like the grassroots approach.
I don't feel like I have the answer for this question. I don't think anyone up here would profess to have the answer to this question. There's a lot of different things that go into it, but thinking about it, it's ease of use. It's the human condition. We wanna do what's the simplest to do. There's the small percentage of us that are the cheerleaders for our city and for our nation and things like that. We're involved. That's why we're all sitting here, because we can do something and we feel like we should. That's a small, small, small minority. Karina, if I could have recorded what she said and just played back, I would. Vote by mail. Get votes on the internet. Make it easy for people to use eventually. We'll grow into those things as we go. They have driverless cars for Pete's sake. Why can't we put voting on the internet? Make it easy. Figure it out. But, you know, passion in your city, doing something because you can. People in other countries are voting and getting their hands chopped off because of it, and we can't be bothered to go three blocks to vote. It's a sad condition, but it's something we have to continue to chip away at.
I have a son that played baseball at TCU High School. I loved going to the baseball games. My wife would never go to the baseball games until my son started to play. Then she loved the games. She got an interest. I think that's what we need to do as a community. We need to get out the information. We need to take pride in our community. We need to recognize the freedoms that we have. As far as getting more vote by mail, I think that's a great idea, as long as we can do it properly. I think that we just need to get people that are willing to, we have, our community is the greatest volunteers in the world. And I think once we become involved, once we find out, look at what the mayor's done as far as social media, what the council has done over the last year, so as far as representing the things that our community is doing, we are reaching out. And I think once people realize and recognize and they're grateful for the opportunities we have here in our city, then they will go out and vote.
Thank you. Our final, we'll give each candidate one minute to wrap up, and we'll start with Karina. But before we do that, while you're getting organized and your final thoughts, let me just, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your willingness to... let me just, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your willingness to put your name out there. We have the opportunity in our business to sit down with politicians and talk with them. And what you have to put your name out there for and your dedication and your time. And as we see, sometimes people take shots at potshots and different things that you. Thank you for your willingness to do this. So with our final wrap-up, Karina, it's one minute. Why they should vote for you.
My career's been focused in high-tech and digital companies. And I understand what it takes to build a coalition and to make data-driven decisions. And I want to make sure that the best idea wins. I'm excited about the future of Provo. We have so much momentum, so much going for us. I want to make sure that we're keeping that going by inviting a strong retail base, by keeping our neighborhoods family-friendly, by growing our businesses, making sure that we have the transportation and the infrastructure ready and prepared to be able to grow in the next 10, 15, 20 years. Provo, to me, is the best city anywhere. I'm excited to bring a different dynamic to the council. I get how great Provo is, and I'm really excited about the amazing potential of the city.
Let me turn the tables and ask you questions. By the hand, who lives in Provo here? Okay, excellent. How many of you are registered to vote? Excellent. How many of you live in District 5?
No, you're not going to get my vote.
And how many don't know which district they live in? Okay, about the rest of you. Okay, I've been involved heavily in my time in Provo. I have, I've been a neighborhood chair. I'm serving vice chair on the Transportation Mobility Advisory Committee. I've been dedicated to being involved and to make Provo better. At this time, I think that the best place that I can serve my fellow residents of Provo is on the council at this time. I think we've got a lot of growth coming both. And I will help make it grow well.
Hi, my name is Stephen Hemmingway. I'm running as Hemi. And one of the things that, we have a problem with in District 5, which you probably see all the time when you go to Provo. And we haven't talked about today. And it's like, we try and set them aside, but it's the homeless individuals. Now, every time I've run for office, there's been, my thought is whatever I do can make a change, whether win, lose, or draw. Now, we need to work on the situation with the homeless. And looking at the reports for 2014, it is something we need to work on. Because there's only $80 in the funds to work for homelessness. $80. I spent 70, no, let's see, 75 plus $10. I had $82 to run. I should have just given it to homeless. I'd probably be better off. Now, I would advocate that we, whoever wins, does something about the homeless.
I'd like and encourage you to visit my website, dateconnect.org. I believe in a balanced approach. And I am committed to a balanced budget, balanced growth, and balanced decision-making. With our budget, we need to make sure that we keep as many of our sales tax dollars in Provo as possible so we can not raise our taxes. With balanced growth, we need to balance residential and commercial and retail. So again, we can have a viable and healthy community with the money we need for all the services that we expect. And balanced decision-making by including all the stakeholders, having everyone with a seat at the table and their voice heard.
I'm Brian Smith. I'm running for District 3 because I can. I grew up here. Since I was 12, went to Fair Junior High School. Went to Timpew, went to BYU, worked at Nobel, worked at New Skin. I coach soccer here. I'm a Provo kid. I'm a Provo guy. And there's no reason to stay. As long as I'm going to stay, or to leave, as long as I'm going to stay here, I'm going to make it better. For me, for my kids, my three sons, and their kids. For my profession, I manage and work as a business analyst. And our job basically is to do a gap analysis. Here's where we are. Here's where we want to be. How do we get there? And I'm pretty good at it. And I'm good at finding the resources to bridge that gap and take the crazy out of it. Make sure that that bridge looks like it's supposed to be and is serviceable and is within the needs of residents. I want to do that for Provo. I've spent the last seven, eight years volunteering on the ARX Record and Planning Commission. And I have very current experience. And I'm ready to put that forward for the betterment of Provo City.
I've had the opportunity to be on the city council for the last four years. I have gave experience in so many areas. It's been a wonderful experience. We have developed some momentum here in Provo that is fabulous. I want to take advantage of that momentum that we have and continue to build on that. We have opportunities. Look at what's happening in our, we're having the dedication of the LDS temple where 900,000 people are going to be in our downtown. We need to take advantage of that. I look at the West Side. I look at the airport. I look at what we did with our rec center in the last couple of years. What a great opportunity we have had. And we need to keep the momentum going. I work hard. I have gained a lot of knowledge, and I work well with people. That's one thing that I do. I empathize with people. People, I understand what they're trying to say. I work well with them. I love Provo. I love and respect anyone that is willing to come up and talk with me. I'm grateful for people that are willing to do that. I am grateful for the opportunity that I have to rerun for reelection.
Provo's a great city. It's great to be part of it. I've been part of Provo my whole life. I've had a business and family raised here. It's just part of me. I want to thank you for coming tonight. And I'm trying to understand why we want to be part of the city council. Appreciate Mr. Davis and Mr. Williams for their time also. As a member of the council, I want to make sure we can budget and balance the budget with our needs and our wants and how we use the funds that are sacred funds of our citizens and provide for the needs we need. And how do we balance the rest? How do we balance those wants where it doesn't hurt select parts of our community? I think there are segments of our community who don't get out to meetings, don't spend a lot of time on the internet. And they need to be represented. They need to be heard. They're busy working and trying to provide lending for their family. And they don't have time to these, those people need to be represented. And I just like to go forward and do that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We've got many great candidates. Now, go vote. Thank you.